Call to order. The November 8, 2021 Regular Wasilla City Council Meeting is called to order. For those streaming the meeting, my name is Nikki Belloc. As Deputy Mayor, I’m chairing the meeting in Mayor Ledford’s absence tonight. The time is 6:00 PM. Before we begin, council, please put away your cellphones. If you have any personal business to attend to during the meeting, please move to a recess. If you are participating telephonically, please mute your phone unless speaking. Also, when speaking, please state your name for those streaming the meeting. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. Councilmember Sullivan Leonard?
Here.
Councilmember Graham?
Here.
Councilmember Johnson?
Here.
Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Councilmember Belloc?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Belloc. Councilmember Harvey?
Here.
You do have a quorum, Madam Deputy Mayor. We have Councilmembers Sullivan Leonard, Graham, Johnson, Brown, and Belloc, and yourself, participating with us in person. Councilmember Harvey is telephonic.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Colleen?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the agenda is the first item of business. Are there any changes? Hearing none, the agenda will stand as presented. Special orders of the day. There are two proclamations under special orders of the day. I’ll begin by reading the proclamation honoring Veterans’ Day, followed by the proclamation recognizing November as Lung Cancer Awareness Month. Whereas our great nation was founded on the belief that all Americans are created equal, that all Americans are guaranteed the inalienable right of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness, and whereas in 1954 President Dwight D. Eisenhower signed legislation proclaiming every November 11th as a day to honor all veterans of the United States Armed Forces, and whereas on Veterans’ Day we honor the men and women who have answered the call to duty, selfishly sacrificing to serve our country and protect the rights of all Americans, and whereas Alaska joins the rest of our nation in recognizing our soldiers, sailors, airmen, Marines, and Coast Guardsmen who have valiantly defended American values throughout our country’s history, and whereas these remarkable individuals inspire our country with their courage, compassion, and dedication, and whereas we remember all who have given their lives in defense of freedom, and we promise to honor their memory, never taking our freedoms for granted, and whereas we thank our active-duty military, reserve, and Alaska National Guard service members who served to defend our nation’s founding ideals, protecting the innocent and liberating the oppressed from tyranny and terror, and whereas today we take the opportunity to show gratitude to our veterans and their family members who call Alaska home, as well as the men and women still serving in the armed forces around the globe, and whereas we are grateful for the efforts, the sacrifices, and the dedication to duty of our veterans and the men and women currently serving in the armed forces. Now therefore, I, Glenda D. Ledford, Mayor of the City of Wasilla, do hereby proclaim November 11th, 2021, as Veterans’ Day in Wasilla, and ask all to join me in recognizing our veterans and honoring their fateful service to our state and our nation, dated this 8th day of November, 2021.
Madam Chair, Councilman Brown. Also, if you go to the Alaska Veterans Affairs website, there’ll be a link to go to a Veterans’ Day ceremony that would be virtual.
Nice. Thank you, Simon. City of Wasilla proclamation recognizing November as Lung Cancer Awareness Month. Whereas lung cancer is the leading cause of cancer death among men and women in the United States, accounting for more deaths in colon cancer, breast cancer, and prostate cancer combined, and whereas each year approximately 218,500 people in the United States are diagnosed with lung cancer and approximately 142,000 people will die from this disease, and whereas tobacco use is the leading risk factor for lung cancer. Smoking and secondhand smoke both have been shown to cause lung cancer, and whereas in Alaska only 18.6% of cases are caught at an early stage, which is significantly lower than the national rate of 22.9%, ranking 48th among the 49 states with data on diagnosis at an early stage, and whereas screening for lung cancer with annual low-dose CT scans among those at high risk can reduce the lung cancer death rate by up to 20% by detecting tumors at early stages when they are more likely to be curable, and whereas organizations working in the Wasilla community, such as the American Lung Cancer Screening Initiative and Women’s Lung Cancer Forum, are committed to educating the community about lung cancer and lung cancer screening. Now therefore, I, Glenda D. Ledford, Mayor of the City of Wasilla, do hereby proclaim November as Lung Cancer Awareness Month in the City of Wasilla, and encourage all citizens to recognize the need for research in lung cancer health disparities, and encourage all citizens to learn about lung cancer risks, screening, and early detection, dated this 8th day of November, 2021. Next on the agenda is Commission and Agency Reports, where we will hear from Wasilla High School student representatives.
Hello, my name’s Lena, and I’ll be representing Wasilla High School, and these are just a few of the things that has happened this past month. Our volleyball team placed 2nd in the Region 3 Tournament at Palmer High School. Wrestling is in full swing this past weekend. The girls had a wrestling tournament, ACS, and the boys had it at Sohigh. Wasilla Warrior Nation had six divers, boys and girls, in the finals this past week for the ASAA State Swimming and Diving Championships. Cade Reynolds, WHS Senior, placed 1st. DeShawn Campbell, WHS Junior, also placed 3rd. Aubrey Daitez, Career Tech Junior, placed 3rd on the girl’s side. Our hockey is off to an excellent start. We just beat Palmer, our rival, 2-0 this past Friday, and our season is 3-1. Our next game is tomorrow, Tuesday, at 7:00. Little Women, our play, opened this past weekend. It is great. The musical’s last run is this Thursday, November 11th, Saturday, and November 13th, in honor of Veterans’ Day on November 11th. All military and families, past and present, will be admitted for free. This is a must-see performance. There’s also an exciting career and technical education addition to Wasilla High School next semester. Mr. Gold, our auto shop teacher, will be implementing a Kubota Diesel Technician NC3 certification into his classes. Students will have an opportunity to obtain this industry standard certification through our auto shop and diesel program. Mr. Marvel, our principal, is having our second monthly café, the Community and Family Engagement, of the school year this Wednesday, November 10th, from 8:00 to 8:30 at Wasilla High School. Principal Marvel invites any community or family members into the school to learn about all the great things that are going on to the Warrior Nation. We will buy the coffee. Finally, Warrior Nation wishes to extend our congratulations to former Mayor Kurt Cottle, present Mayor Glenda Ledford, and City Council members for working to get the City of Wasilla debt-free. Thank you for your continued service to our community.
Thank you. And what was your last name?
Boots.
Boots, okay, thank you.
B-O-T-S.
Okay. Yes, we’re looking forward to that Little Women’s performance. I’m going to be there. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Public participation. There is one public-
Madam Deputy Mayor, while we’re still on Commission and Agency Reports, I do have a few items that I’d like to cover.
Oh, okay. Go ahead.
First, since rejoining the council, I haven’t seen any sort of staffing reports or anything from the Police Department. Chief, could you bring me up to speed on how we are staffing? Do we have any vacant positions? Are we having any recruiting issues? Do we have a reserve program up and running yet?
Yes, Councilmember Graham, we do have some openings at the Police Department. Let me take this off here so you can maybe hear me a little better. We do have some openings at the Police Department. We just had one new hire. We’ve got another new hire coming on here in a couple of weeks. That will leave us with two positions. However, we do have some, I’d like to see hopefully good applicants that are in the pool, and I’d say we’re hopeful that we might be able to get all staffing positions filled by early next year.
And the second part of that question was, is are we going to be able to restart the reserve program?
We’re currently looking at that right now. With part of the hurdle that we had early on, obviously, has been COVID, and that has been a reoccurring issue that we’ve had to deal with over the last couple of years. But we’re currently looking at how can we kind of maybe step outside of the normal classroom-type learning environment and take advantage of maybe some online things. The other hurdle is that, obviously, we’ve had some hurdles with getting quality applicants for full-time officers, let alone people that are wanting to volunteer to do this type of work. However, we do have people that are interested, so it’s something that’s under the works right now.
Great, I appreciate that. And second question for you. I know some time ago, well, not maybe just a couple of months ago, we approved the Marijuana Control Office taking space inside the Police Department. Has that happened yet, and is that a workable situation for you?
It’s been occupying space for maybe two weeks now, so far, so good.
Okay, great. Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. Any other questions from the council? Okay.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Madam Deputy Mayor, I do have a question for the Police Chief as well, or maybe it’s not a Police Chief question, but the position that we posted for the full-time mechanic position there at the shop at WP, has that been filled?
I will ask Troy that question.
Councilman Harvey, no, the position hasn’t been filled as of yet. We’ve had discussions with Local 302 on this matter, and also there’s still the acquisition of some equipment. Without the equipment, obviously, so it’s just kind of on hold for now.
I think it-
Thank you. Any other questions from the council? Okay, we will go on to public hearing. We have one public hearing this evening. Madam Clerk, please read the title of the ordinance.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. That’s Ordinance Serial Number 2919, amending the fiscal year 2022 youth court budget by accepting and appropriating $820 from the United Way Matsui for costs associated with the annual United Youth Courts of Alaska Conference in Palmer, Alaska.
The public hearing on Ordinance Serial Number 2119 is open. Anyone who would like to testify, please come forward and begin by stating your first and last name. Okay, seeing none, the public hearing is closed.
Madam Deputy Mayor, I move Ordinance Serial 2119.
Sarah Sekka?
Councilman Brown, second.
It’s been moved by Councilmember Graham and seconded by Councilmember Brown to adopt Ordinance Serial Number 2119. Is there discussion? Mr. Graham?
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. For those persons listening, or perhaps even in the room, that aren’t aware of the great things that happen through the youth court, you know, this is truly an opportunity for someone that has committed a mistake or two to actually get a second chance by dealing with their peers instead of dealing with the formal court system. So, you know, if you talk to the folks that are part of the youth court system, and you talk to the folks that have, you know, perhaps tripped up along the way and gone to the youth court system to sit on the other side, they can tell you this is a huge, huge benefit, and we are certainly grateful that this Matsui Youth Court exists, and I am very proud that the City of Wasilla helps support this and is working with the United Way to continue this. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Madam Clerk, please take a roll call vote on the adoption of Ordinance Serial Number 2119.
Thank you. Councilmember Sullivan Leonard?
Yes.
Councilmember Graham?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Belloc?
Yes.
Councilmember Harvey?
Yes.
The motion to adopt Ordinance Serial Number 2919 passes unanimously with Councilmembers Sullivan Leonard, Graham, Johnson, Brown, Belloc, and Harvey in support.
Okay, we have persons to be heard. We have Justin Coles. Okay, please begin your testimony by stating your first and last name, and you have three minutes.
Hello, thank you for hearing me. My name’s Justin Coles. I live at 683 West Nelson, and I live right across from the park. For my health reasons, I walk down Nelson every day and into the park, and I want to mention that the people that take care of the park have done a superb job this year. They’ve kept it clean, they’ve erased all of the nasty awards that are made by the kids with graffiti, and they’ve repaired things, broken. They’re exceptional work there. That’s not the reason I came to talk today. I’d like to address the issue of the speed zone on Nelson. From the time that Nelson starts on Main Street, its entire length is a 25 mile-an-hour zone. Nobody goes 25 miles an hour. There are a few, but very few. Most of them are going 60 and 70 miles an hour. They come down Beauregard, they don’t reduce the speed when they get to Kersey, then they cross over, and if they make it through that light, they’re already going 50, 55 miles an hour in the 25 mile-an-hour zone. They continue on down, and if they’re going real fast, they can’t negotiate the turn. There’s a little dog leg on Nelson, on the sidewalk that we walk in every day, and if they don’t negotiate that turn, they hit the curb and jump up on the sidewalk. I’ve seen over 20 cars do that. In fact, they’ve worn down the curb, the sidewalk curb, and if you’re going 25 miles an hour, you’re going to be able to negotiate that turn, and if you’re not, you’re going faster than that. I have never seen any police officers out there giving tickets because I’m certainly assured that you guys don’t have the resources to do that. However, if you were to use a speed bump type affair, it’s self-regulating. A car that goes over it at 25 miles an hour will not have any problems. However, if a car goes over that at 55 miles an hour, they will soon learn that they can’t do that. So I’d like to have the city put in speed bumps before the park. I’ve seen kids running for their lives on some of these cars, and also as it comes down the hill on the eastbound towards Weber Street. That’s a 25 mile-an-hour zone there, and everybody accelerates to 50 to get up that hill. And the cars coming the other way, come down that hill, and if they’re going the speed limit, they won’t stop before they get to Weber. They won’t be able to slow down enough to keep from striking the vehicles on Weber Street. Thank you very much, I appreciate you hearing me.
Thank you. Next is Ms. Falkenstein.
Good evening, Madam Deputy Mayor, councilmembers. I’m Eileen Falkenstein. I represent Wasilla Area Seniors. We had some big things happening this month. We had our grand opening and ribbon-cutting ceremony for Willow House on November 4th. That is the new senior housing that’s gone in on the Wasi campus, and attendees were also treated to tours of the much-anticipated senior housing units. We’re also in the middle of our Pie Forward fundraiser. There’s still time to order your Thanksgiving pumpkin, apple, or pecan pie if you haven’t already done so. If you don’t want the calories, you can certainly donate your pies back to one of our seniors for their Thanksgiving meal. We also have our online auction going on. We have a lot of great items on the auction site. We have some tickets to Skate Talk. We have some memberships at Birchwood Shooting Range. We have memberships at the Alaska Zoo. We have great arts and crafts and gift baskets. The auction is open until November 19th, and on November 20th, pies and auction items will be available for pickup at Wasi. Of course, if you would like to, you can always do a cash donation if these methods are not something that worked for you. We would like to also invite you to join us on November 11th. We’ll be doing our Quilts of Valor presentation at Wasi at 11:00 AM. The folks that do the quilts will presenting warm homemade quilts, handmade quilts, to our local veterans and thanking them for their service. One of the things we’re looking for also is people to serve on our Wasilla Board, on our Wasi Board of Directors. We have some openings, and if you or anyone you know of has a passion for helping our seniors, we would like to talk to them. So have them give us a call, stop by, and we have information available on that. And that’s going to do it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have to say that I did participate in a veterans’ meal at Wasi two years ago, and how much it meant to those veterans to receive those quilts. I mean, they were teary-eyed, and anyway, it was really-
And they do wrap them around-
They do. It’s a really, it is.
And lunch is chicken parmigiana that day, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the council at this time? Okay, hearing none. Madam Clerk, please read the consent agenda.
Thank you, Madam Deputy. I would like to point out before I read it into the record, on page 33 of the packet, this is the Legislative Staff Report that accompanies Ordinance Serial Number 2122, which is up for introduction. I did find a typographical error today that will be corrected in the next packet when the item goes to public hearing. The last, very last sentence of that staff report currently reads “This action memorandum authorizes,” and we’re going to strike that, and it is going to read “This ordinance provides funding for the engineering services contract to proceed for the Hurley Circle Utility Extension Project.” So I wanted to point that out before I read the consent agenda. So items for approval under our consent agenda this evening are the regular meeting minutes of October 25th, 2021. We have two introductions with the public hearing date of November 22nd, 2021. The first is Ordinance Serial Number 2120. That’s amending the fiscal year 2022 budget by appropriating $30,000 from the general fund fund balance for a building security risk assessment. The second is Ordinance Serial Number 2122, amending the fiscal year 2022 budget by appropriating $27,000 from the sewer fund fund balance and $27,000 from the water fund fund balance for Hurley Circle Utility Extension Engineering Services. One resolution up for approval, Resolution Serial Number 2125. That’s transferring funds within an accounting fund in the amount of $3,600 for the City Hall remodel project, and we have no action memorandums. Those are our items for approval.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as read?
Councilman Johnson recommends approval.
I’ll second that.
It’s been moved by Councilmember Johnson and seconded by Councilmember Sullivan Leonard to approve the consent agenda as read. Is there an objection to the motion? Hearing none, the motion is approved. Unfinished business? There is no unfinished business this evening. We are now at new business. Madam Clerk, please read the title of the first item.
Thank you. That’s an update from administration on emergency response efforts related to COVID-19.
Deputy Administrator Nygaard, has the administration taken any new measures in response to the COVID-19 pandemic?
None at this time. We are highly recommending when people come into any of the facilities that they do wear a mask and do social distancing. We are also in conversation with some of our partners about ensuring that our police officers and SROs in the high school have some of the self kits so they can do some self-testing, and so we’re trying to mitigate wherever possible.
Thank you.
Madam Deputy Mayor?
Yes.
A question for Mr. Tankersley. Have any funds been expended during the past month, not the current month, but the past month regarding COVID?
We’ve had some incidental expenses, obviously, from the city, and then about a half million dollars back to the city for public safety.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Okay. Madam Clerk, please read the title of the next item of business.
Thank you. That’s Informational Memorandum 2114, which is the Draft Code of Ethics Review and Discussion.
Is there a motion to enter committee of the whole?
So moved, Madam Mayor.
I’ll second.
Is there an objection to the motion? Hearing none, the motion is approved. The time is 6:27. We will begin with a presentation from the city attorney.
Okay, so I know that, can you, is that on?
Uh-huh.
Yes, okay. I know that we gave you a lot of materials on this. You have a memo, and you have a draft ordinance that presents the Code of Ethics, the redline version of what that’ll look like. In part, that’s because you don’t currently have a Code of Ethics, but that’s also to allow council to really digest what is being or will likely be proposed in the ordinance, and for us as a working group to get your comments and feedback and thoughts so that they can be incorporated into the ordinance for its introduction. And Councilmember Brown, correct me if I’m wrong, Councilmember Brown, but this is a really important process when we’re talking about a piece of legislation that will have very immediate and real impacts for the council members and also, obviously, the public. So I am going to move pretty quickly through this PowerPoint, but I wanted to have an opportunity to address some of the salient points with you, and we can go to sort of a, we can address them as they come up. So the overview, this Code of Ethics has some very, some very global ethically-based goals that are general in nature, and it is important that council understands sort of what the scope is because, to the extent there’s any nuances in the Code of Ethics, if it’s adopted, the general scope of the Code of Ethics, which is included in the, or will be included in the code itself if passed, will govern. It is similar to the Open Meetings Act. I’m sure most of you, you’re very familiar with the Open Meetings Act, and there is a scope and purpose section in the Open Meetings Act that I consider the sort of gut-check section of that code, and if you’re familiar with it, it helps council members and public officials stay on the right side of the line even if things are nuanced. So we have a section in your code that does just that, and it talks about the purpose and the importance of promoting public confidence and preserving that confidence by the public in their elected- In their elected officials. It talks about the loyalty owed to the public, and also the importance of providing uniform guidance to council members and commission members. One of the things the Code of Ethics does is it sets expectations. So if there are a smattering of conflicts of interest and potential prohibition sections in the code that council members aren't or commission members aren't as familiar with these provisions or where they live, it's very easy to inadvertently violate a code provision that you're not really that familiar with. And so what a Code of Ethics attempts to do, or this Code of Ethics attempts to do, is get all of those provisions consolidated in one area. The public knows what they're holding their city officials accountable for, but also city officials know what is expected of them. The other piece of this is setting balance. You know, a Code of Ethics for New York City is different than a Code of Ethics for Wasilla, and setting your goals and objectives in a way that also ensures that the individual rights to free speech and participation in the economy and all of these things that are important for elected and appointed officials of small communities, that those are preserved, and that that's the intention of the code, is to preserve those, while also providing protections and transparent conduct. Is... That's a very important piece of the way this Code of Ethics has been drafted, and the goal was to create that balance or provide that balance. So one of the things that... There's different approaches to Code of Ethics in a lot of municipalities in Alaska. The first question is, who does it apply to? And what the... What this ordinance proposes, or this Code of Ethics proposes, is a code that applies not only to city council members and appointed commission and board members, but also to the city attorney and city clerk. It does not apply to city employees or directors. And the reason for this is the city employees and directors are subject to a personnel policy and procedures manual, and they are governed by other state... State and federal laws regarding discrimination and harassment policies and what they can and cannot do with city supplies, and so their obligations are different. And we wanted to make sure that we didn't create a Code of Ethics that overreached and therefore actually abbreviated some of the obligations they have. We also have a unionized workforce in part in Wasilla, and we wanted to respect that process and make sure that stayed separate so that we didn't inadvertently get sideways of any of our obligations under employment law.
Madam Attorney, this is Councilman Johnson. I do have a question here. I guess it's going to involve the term director. From my experience, a director is a person who has fiscal responsibility within the organization and the ability to actually commit the organization's resources for an objective. Managers usually do not. City employees below that would not. And as a result, directors, in my experience, have always been under the fiscal Code of Ethics that would be more so than just a policy manual.
Absolutely, and I think that really makes a great point because one thing that your finance director could tell you, there are many obligations and rules of ethics in his own industry that will govern and have implications for his responsibilities and obligations that are different and more heightened than, say, another employee. But it's one... It's another reason that I generally, when it comes to employees and directors, especially directors, I like to see those provisions and a personnel policy that's governing what is expected of directors because for some of them, they will have professional standards that are also encompassed in what they have to do and why, and so... And while the attorney has that as well, we are subject to an ethics... Rules of Ethics by the Alaska Bar Association, and we have to comply with certain CLEs, and we have to take those steps here because of our relationship to council in that we are appointed by council, so council can hire and fire the attorney at any time. It felt that it was appropriate, and it was... There was a very clean scope to put us under... Put your attorneys under your Code of Ethics. We'll still have our other obligations, but that, you know, as your direct employee, and that also applies to the city clerk. So I... A lot of them do not go so far as to include the city clerk and the city attorney, but here we err on the side of being more inclusive in that way.
Follow-up question then. So if the directors are handled by a specific other Code of Ethics, wouldn't it be prudent from the state of transparency to actually list that as part of our ordinance?
Well, there's many, and this is the thing. So when we're talking about employment laws that applies to the city employees, they are subject to a personnel policy, right? Some of them are subject to collection bargaining agreements. They are subject to certain laws and expectations that we then, you know, and grievance procedures. So if we made that... If we said, "Let's expand the Code of Ethics to apply to all employees," well then, yeah... Or if we're going to apply it to directors, well then... And that would be... I think you could. I think we could expand it to apply to directors, but the question then becomes, how do we marry that with the other expectations that we've set for them when we have a hearing officer, say, involved in a Code of Ethics complaint process? And then we have a... We have the mayor going through the termination and potentially the disciplinary process. Those are... That's two different procedures that when I... When you try to do those two procedures together or at the same time, it gets really messy, and there's a lot of inadvertent consequences, right? So I think it's best for employees to be dealt with, and directors are certainly have heightened responsibilities, but they are, in fact, employees of the city. And so... And they are, under your code, they fall under the purview of the administration. So we would teach them to be dealt with in that way. That's the cleanest way. Now, to the extent that there is a problem with that process or you have issues, I think that comes up when it comes up. If that comes up where you're unhappy with the employee management, which is really, again, squarely in the administration realm, but I think that's a different discussion where the Code of Ethics is really a way of holding all of us accountable in a way that we have an ethics complaint process, that has a hearing officer, that a decision is rendered because we aren't addressed, right, in the personnel realm.
So then, wouldn't it behoove us to, within our ordinance, to simply say that directors shall be governed by their own ethics policy within the personnel manual? That way, it would tie it... It would tie it and give transparency as to what we're really expecting.
And we do that, or we attempted to do that, but we'll go back and make sure there's no problem with putting a provision when we're talking about the scope of the code and making sure that it's clear that, I think it's Title III, there's a section of the code that deals with personnel, I believe it's Title III, so we'll refer it back and cross-reference. And I think we did that in some areas, but we'll make sure we can go back and get a more for the ordinance when it comes back to the council.
I'll pass.
Might be more user-friendly.
Councilmember Sullivan Leonard? Oh, okay. Any other questions for the city attorney?
No, moving on to...
Okay, thank you.
I'll take some of these a little quicker because I think I froze on that first slide for a little bit. But one of the things that this Code of Ethics does is it tries to provide very clear definitions for substantial financial interest so that the conflict of interest provisions can be understood and applied. Currently, under the city's code, you have a substantial financial interest reference and requirement that you, you know, the council declared conflict, it's itself from participating. And the same goes for board and commission members, but you don't define it, which is, I would find, very confusing, and it's actually hard as an attorney to navigate that too because you often have officials that say, "I don't know if this is a substantial..." What is a substantial financial interest, you know, and what is it this year? What is it next year? It may change. And so we have direction from the courts on what we have to consider when we look at a conflict of interest, and it's a balancing test, and there's criteria. But that doesn't... I don't think that is as easy for the public or officials to understand as a clear dollar amount. So we worked together to try to come up with a dollar amount that made sense, and I'm just gonna... Here, I think I went a little too far. All right, well, what we did was we came up with $1,000 per occurrence and $5,000 in the aggregate. And that seemed like a good starting place, and so you'll see that in the ordinance, but it's important that council really think about that number, those numbers, and if they make sense. And the purpose was to set a presumption of a conflict. So now, the substantial financial interest language is predominantly the same, but it has a definition that says if you have a transaction of $1,000 or $5,000 in the aggregate for the year, that there is a presumed conflict of interest, or I'm sorry, a presumed substantial financial interest. And if you have that presumption, you can, you know, council can, or a council member or a commission member can say, "No, you know, I actually don't have a conflict of interest here, and this is why," or it also... Because there is criteria that you're marching through regarding the impact of that interest and whether or not it's affecting your decision-making process, and because you're marching through all of those, even a lesser interest could raise to the level of substantial financial interest, but it gives council a way to talk about it, it gives the commission a way to talk about it and analyze it. Does anybody have any questions on that?
Thank you. If you could just give us a few examples of what or how you would tie in for the financial interest or conflict of interest with regard to $1,000 per transaction or $5,000 for aggregate total? Just kind of put a parameter around it in the sense of myself as a city council member. What would you see as an ethical violation or conflict of interest up to $1,000?
I think it... Let's see, of a... I'm trying to think of an easy example using a conflict of interest that might be created, but let's say that there is a RFP proposal or award process before the council, and somebody, one of the council members has a spouse that works for that contractor who's up for the award. And so the question would be, is there a conflict to make a decision regarding on that award? Maybe that's a different analysis if it's a nonprofit corporation and they don't receive any compensation, or maybe it's a nonprofit corporation and they receive $50 a meeting for 12 meetings versus a... They're an employee of that contractor and they get paid, you know, over the $12,000. And so when you're looking at what is a substantial financial interest, especially in Alaska and communities, I mean, there are so many times that council members and commission members, and I think it's very important to remember that this applies to commission members because they have, the planning commission in particular, right? They have a lot of people coming for them, and most of the time, they've... They put in applications and they're appointed because they're engaged in the economic and land use planning arena of Wasilla, which means they have lots of relationships. And we don't want a Code of Ethics that would prohibit people or de-incentivize participation in government because you feel like, "I can't do anything now if I'm going to do this without hurting my livelihood or my interactions." And so our goal is to come up with something, and I will say, and Councilmember Brown, correct me if I'm wrong, but these numbers were really based on what we found across the state, what seemed reasonable, and this really exemplifies why we wanted to get this in front of you before it was formally in front of you. So I don't know if that answers your question. That's one example.
No, it does, and that's good. That's why I wanted it on the record, just so that way people can understand what we're looking at and why it's written this way.
And that's really helpful, too, because hopefully all of you can think through some hypotheticals, and maybe even for some, you know, council members who've been sitting for a while, you can think through specific examples where things might have gotten messy or confusing or where you felt uncertain. And so the goal is to really close the uncertainty gap without doing it in a way that's so rigid that it actually has a negative impact on governance. We want you to be fluid and able to continue to govern. So that... Any other questions on this one? This one is kind of a big one because we certainly are looking to you for input.
Counselor, this is Councilman Johnson. So within the procedure, I did not get to look at all of the details in this. So is there a procedure, forms, or whatever, for actually disclosing conflicts when they exist? Is there a procedure? That's probably the best word I could have used. Is a procedure within the ordinance to disclose that?
Yes, and we preserved much of the same disclosure process that council had before, but with prior to the approval of the agenda, a council member with a... And I'm using a council member as an example. We separate out council member and commission members, and I'll explain that in a moment, but a council member would declare a conflict. Another council member may also identify a conflict if they think that a council member has. And then the mayor issues a decision based... Does the... First looks at whether or not a financial interest exists, and then looks at whether or not that financial interest is a substantial one, and issues a ruling on it. If the council is unhappy with that determination, it can override it. And so the commission, and that's a very standard practice. In part, it stems from Title 29, which has a provision that says you have to have a conflict of interest provision, and it has to have this, you declare, and then the mayor makes a determination, and then it's override by council. And I... In Title 20, I'm with a really trying to preserve is council's ability to say, "No, we disagree. We think there's a conflict here," you know? So that's all statutory. We do have the ability to go against that statute through a ordinance, but generally, unless we have a very good reason, when we have something like that, that's been litigated and validated, I don't recommend we go against it lightly.
Right, but not all conflict of interests are financial?
That's true, but, well, actually, that's not true. I guess it's true to a certain extent. Right now, under your code, it is not true. You have a substantial financial interest, which is what qualifies as a conflict of interest, and you do not have any other provisions that suggest that there could be a violation of the code due to a conflict. Under the Code of Ethics, we take up another arena, which is your... Sometimes you will sit as a quasi-judicial body, and there is this element of partiality and impartiality, and I think that's what you're getting to. There's sort of this world of bias, right, and making sure that you can navigate that. So while, when you're making a decision as a council member, we're going to do that conflict of interest analysis. When you're making a decision that impacts one individual, one application, we're going... Then your potential bias or partiality is now something that council will have to consider and, you know, refrain from making determinations on those. And the commission as well. And that actually impacts, once again, the planning commission is impacted significantly by that. But it is worth noting that that requirement, that you not make determinations on an individual on an action affecting an individual or a small group of individuals without bias, that's actually... actually embedded in our constitutional due process requirements. So it's there, but you can't see it. And that is exactly the type of thing that is so terrifying. You know, it's really scary for people to say, I'm here, I'm going to serve my community, and I have all of the best intentions. And to have these invisible laws that are very important, that it can have very serious ramifications, that there's really no, you know, it's not, it's not the Open Meetings Act, so it doesn't necessarily come into our training, although your city clerk does a great job of touching on them, and it's certainly not the code. Any other follow-ups on? Okay. So I'm going to talk a little bit about this rule of necessity, only because I think it's a head turner when you see it in the code of ethics, so it's worth discussing. We talked a lot about writing a code that actually fits, fits Wasilla in the way that its commission, council, and clerks and so the attorney will navigate. But one of the important parts is this, there are, it is not unusual, it doesn't come up all that often, but it certainly does come up, where for some reason, the majority of the body has a conflict that there is no way out of. You know, you can wait another three months, you can wait four months, but it doesn't change the fact that four council members happen to live in this one district, or happen to all be somehow linked to some decision that the council has to make. And, and so when that happens, the courts allow for this, they allow the council members to disclose those interests and to march through some criterias and determinations, mainly, there's no one else who can decide this. No one else has jurisdiction over this matter. The conflicts aren't going away. There's nothing that we can do to make the conflicts go away. And so we have to take an action. And in that case, they invoke the rule of necessity, which allows you to make a determination on something that you have a conflict of interest in. So since this exists, the very worst thing that can happen for, in my opinion, for the appearance of impropriety, is for the rule of necessity to be invoked without the public ever knowing that it's out there or seeing in an existence, because they think, wait, what? You're telling me you have an interest, and now you're making a decision? You basically just admitted that you're treating me unfairly. And so making sure they know that's there, so that they understand it's not specific to them is important. The other thing that we did when we added the rule of necessity, we created a, the authority for, so while rule of necessity will apply to the council if this ever happens, because there is no higher decision-making body for the city, we grant the, we allow for a hearing officer to determine a decision before the commission, if it has those, if it has a majority, you know, if it basically would meet the rule of necessity criteria. Instead of allowing them to make a decision, instead, the clerk will appoint a hearing officer, and a hearing officer will make that decision. And the goal there was to really preserve that fairness and justice for applicant, not the litigants, the applicants. Any questions on the rule of necessity? So the next, and I won't go into these too much, but we have some prohibited conducts that will now, that is in your code of ethics, but is not currently in your code. And we look to, code of ethics throughout the state of Alaska. We looked at areas that had led to litigation or caused a degradation of trust in officials throughout, really, we tried to focus on Alaska and communities similar to Wasilla. And so what you have is, and some of these things, such as taking part in political activity while on duty, there are, there are provisions in the code that maybe deal with some of this stuff tangentially, so we just reiterated it. It also, it, so it prevents representing private interests for compensation. Again, something that shows up in the code in some ways, but not directly. And we have a prohibition of accepting gratuities greater than $150 in value, other than lawful campaign contributions, and using city property for non-city purposes. Some of these things, too, are in your policies and procedures. This just puts them in the code. It makes it very clear. And to your point earlier, failure to act impartially is now directly addressed in the code. False statements are prohibited, and it is directly prohibited to disclose confidential information relating to city and government affairs, to attempt to, or to influence another official's vote by contract, by contacting their employer or threatening him or them, or threatening harm, or engaging in harassment, retaliation, and discrimination. So it takes some applicable provisions from the employee handbook and pulls them into the code of ethics, so that there is, but it tries to make it really just very clear, clear to the public, clear to all of us subject to it. The other thing, though, that we did is create a mechanism for council and commissioners to--
Oh, I'm sorry, Holly. Excuse me. I had, I had a question. You jumped ahead before I had a chance to jump in, so I, I apologize. So with regard to prohibited conduct, I just have a quick question. I know that you have gratuities at maximum of $150. So, you know, is that a vest? Is that someone taking you out to dinner in the sense of a gratuity? That's kind of what I think of. And coming from the Alaska State Legislature, for example, our maximum that we could have, for example, lunch with a lobbyist was like $15, maybe 20 at the most. So why 150, then, for that threshold?
So I think one of the things we were looking at is, and we do talk about exemptions for dinners. There's some, this is a more, and it can change, but this provides more flexibility in what you can do, in part because this is, when you're navigating your local community and those relationships, and there's lots of crossover between the types of relationships. You know, there's, the, there are so many times that a council member or a commission member is navigating personal and friend, personal, professional relationships, and at the same time showing up at a meeting where there's a lot of interaction with these individuals. And that goes for employees and council and commission members as well. So we, we keep that provision pretty broad, at least on, you know, at first, you know, when we put in the ordinance at the introduction stage, to make sure we're not creating a hurdle that, that--
Okay.
You know, maybe discourages people for money for office. And so I would say, though, that said, look at it and think about the provision. And there's exemptions, too, in the provision. And see if it fits, or if it's too much, you know, if that, you know, if that, if you think that it will, the public's trust will be hindered rather than helped and promoted by the provision, we probably, it's probably too high.
Okay. Yeah, thank you.
Madam Deputy Mayor?
Go ahead, Councilmember Harvey.
I also have a question on prohibited conduct. And could you give us, and it seems pretty broad, and it seems that makes, it's pretty clear, but can you give us some examples using city property for non-city purposes?
I think, okay, I'll give you an exam. Oh, yeah, Janie, do you have--
Making, this, I mean, making, using a city copy machine to make menus for your business.
I'm going to say, the prohibition in the code makes clear that you're prohibited from using city property to promote, for like, for personal gain. So I think the exact language is for private financial gain, unless that use is available to the general public on the same terms, or unless such use is included in the compensation package provided to the specific official. So, and, so that's, you know, it, but it really is, there will be obvious use of city property by, by the city clerk, by the city attorney, by council members. But it's, it's when that is used for personal reasons or personal gain.
Okay. So, for example, if a sitting council member was utilizing city business cards, I don't know if those are considered city property or not, but they were using that, utilizing those in a way that was not for official purposes, would that be considered something with that like that?
Could you repeat that? I missed the, the first part of that sentence, which I--
If, if a sitting council member is utilizing their business cards, say, for a political campaign, would that be a misuse?
I don't know. I mean, I, if a person, I think it really depends on the details surrounding the business cards and how they're used. And if, if, if they are campaigning and they are providing them materials produced by the city with their position with the city council as, you know, on, on the materials, then there might be other questions as well, right? But I'm not sure that it's the improper use of, it will really determine what they're doing. Yep. But it, and the reason why is there's also campaign and political activity prohibitions under the code of ethics. So if you as city council members start using your title as city council, as a city council member and conducting political activity in that realm, that's, it's, there's some problems there as well. But yes, I mean, in general, if you have material, or if you have been given something to use for the purposes of effectuating your position as a city council member, that is, that should be limited to that purpose, and you certainly shouldn't be using it for a political--
All right, thank you.
Any other questions on prohibited acts? The one thing I, I'll just go back to the gifts. That, I would ask, before we, or when we're at introduction, that all of you take a look at that one. That's E under 20270, because there's a itemized list of the exceptions. So it doesn't prohibit accepting a meal under $150 in value, discounts or prizes that are generally available to the public, or large sections of the public, gifts presented by an employer to its employees in recognition of meritorious service, or civic or public awards, and a lawful campaign contribution made to a candidate for public office. And so just, I want to just draw your attention to it, because your input will be very helpful on that one. On all of them, but especially some of those dollar amounts that have direct impact. So one of the things that we did is we created an advisory opinion process. And this is something that I highly recommend to any community, considering a code of ethics, because sometimes you just don't know. And if you are trying your best to comply with the code of ethics, and a situation comes up that's ambiguous, and you're not sure what to do, there has to be, in my opinion, somewhere to turn, so you can, at least, if, if there is a question later, you have the ability to say, look, I read the code, and then I, I asked for guidance. I asked the, and so what we do is we set up an advisory opinion process where a city official subject to the code of ethics can ask for an opinion by the city attorney as to the propriety of their conduct. And once that is issued, and it has to be done in writing, once it's issued, it provides protection to the city official from an allegation or ethics complaint against them. So that becomes a, a full defense to such an allegation. So that is, that's a great, I think it's a great tool to make this easier to comply with, and for people to have incentive to say, I'm going to get the answer before, you know. And the one thing to note, however, is sometimes the conduct covered in here may be a violation of our code of ethics, but it might also be a violation of another law. And that we cannot foreclose someone's ability to sue a official regarding action that is, that is under federal or state law, or other code provisions, right? We can only deal with, so this only deals with the code of ethics. However, I do think it would probably provide some defense to them in those cases as well.
So Holly, on this slide, the second sentence there, "However, the code cannot be used to avoid a duty to vote or participate in the work of the electorate." Whereas earlier on Slide 5, you have, "Commission members or volunteers may decline to vote when a member believes he or she has a conflict of interest." So if they say they have a conflict of interest, the board decides they don't. It seems to me you've put them in a gray area here. You either do your job and vote, or you step off the council, or the commission, or whatever's going on. It seems to me you're, you've got two doors open here, and neither one of them leads to effective government.
Well, I'm excited that you asked that question, because this is actually one of these nuances in government that I find very interesting. Under Title 29, you as a council must vote. You have no choice, and if you fail to do so, you're violating your oath of office and a bunch of other things. And so we actually have, as a commission member who's appointed, that obligation doesn't exist under Title 29 or otherwise. And so trying to figure out if you want to impose that on your commission members, that's a, that's, I mean, that's not a question for me to answer. I do think that that is a policy-based question. But I believe the theory, looking at some of the legislative history on this, is that when you have a commission member, it's hard enough to get commission members, it's hard enough to get people appointed to this position, and everything that they have to dedicate and give, they are not elected officials. You know, they haven't, their, their dedication hasn't risen to this level where they have put, gone through the electoral process and have this obligation to the voters, and have, in essence, said, I am going to do this every time. That's why when you vote for me, I'm taking on these obligations. And that is why there's a difference. So while the code of ethics, while they're treated differently, council members and commissioners, that is why there is a difference there. So a commission member would not have to vote. If they really believe they have a conflict, they don't have to vote. A council member would. Now, you could, Wasilla could decide that they want to hold commissioner and, commission and board members to that higher standard applied to council. But that's a debate amongst you all. I will make sure that I, I get the provision changed to reflect that.
Thank you.
Something to keep on the list, you know, when it's introduced especially, because it's a fascinating discussion, I think, about obligation. But I, I may be nerding out a little bit here, so I will, I will stop. The other thing that the code of ethics does is it requires the city clerk to provide you training materials and to confirm, you know, that you, that you have this. And that, the reason why training is incorporated into the code of ethics is because this is about, a code of ethics is both about your accountability to the public, or like, the city officials' accountability to the public, but also the city government's accountability to the people that serve it, and giving them clear guidelines. So we'll hold you to a high standard, but you're going to make sure you know what that standard is, and we're going to make sure that it's clean and clear, and it's uniformly applied. And that leads usually to a very efficient code. I'm, very quickly, I, I know that we're going over, so I'm just gonna say this about penalties. We do need to think about the amount of penalties. Right now, we refer in the code provision to the general penalty provision in, in the Wasilla municipal code. And that has a range, though, of 50 at a minimum to 300 at a maximum. So we have not put a dollar amount specifically as a penalty, because generally, I would say 300, but it, because there's personal liability here, and it's applying to individuals, that will be something we will be talking to you about at introduction. Really want opinions on that, and really think through setting a number that discourages conduct, but isn't so onerous that it would discourage people from participating in their local government. As far as the procedure, what happens if I violate this? We set up a hearing procedure before a hearing officer, so that the council is not in a position to make a determination regarding a complaint against one of its fellow council members, or against a commission member. And-- And this also allows the city to preserve confidentiality, which is incredibly important because sometimes ethics complaints don't have a lot of merit and are used instead in a retaliatory way or in a political way. And I'm not saying that Wassala would ever have that happen, but to the extent it does, you really want to provide an environment where the substance of the complaint is vetted in full before anybody has to answer any questions regarding that. And another thing that we did, which this council member Brown recommended this, and I have not done this in other Codes of Ethics, but I think it's a really, really good approach, is making sure we have a means to protect the name of a complainant or a victim and, you know, if it's necessary. I think that's really valuable even after. Again, so if you have a complaint and you have a determination that there's been a violation, but you have a complainant that does not want to be identified, you know, but there's merit to the complaint, finding a way to, you know, having a way to protect their identity is incorporated into this Code of Ethics procedure. So I think that pretty much... I think that hits the high points. I think sanctions, there's some discretion with sanctions, but this does not go so far as to result in the removal of... I mean, that's not... This is designed to have censure, fines, and penalties or sanctions that are aligned with the conduct that issue. And so that will be another one that we will probably be drawing attention to. So there's a few things here. We're just trying to throw a lot at you so that we can make sure you're aware of the pieces of this code, well, all of it really, but the pieces that we think we're really going to need council input. And I would say, am I forgetting anything, Councilmember Brown?
Did an excellent job.
So Holly, on the slide you're on right now, sanctions, civil penalties and remedies, you kind of started that with a discussion about hearing officer. So a hearing officer hears a complaint and determines that there was some violation of the Code of Ethics. One of your bullets there says voiding an appointment. So now we have a hearing officer voiding an appointment that was made by the mayor and ratified by the city council. That sounds kind of heavy-handed to me. I think the code would need to be really specific on how that process would work.
On sanctions?
Yes.
Okay. Yep. So I think that's good feedback. I think that generally it allows for the hearing officer to impose the sanction. So if we wanted to create a limitation there, we could reduce some of those sanctions and stay away from some of the more significant... I mean, right now, the way that it's written, for example, if a violation is found, they can seek a fine of not more than $1,000. They can require them to make a public apology. They can revoke privileges regarding travel. And so I think the most extreme, at least for an appointed member, is to remove them. At the same time, it's not that extreme if you think about it because an appointment is just that, right? It's an appointment.
But it's an appointment by the elected mayor and ratified by the elected city council who have that responsibility as opposed to an independent person chosen to be a hearing officer, which essentially has no skin in the game other than to interpret, you know, what their opinion of a violation happened. I know for me, pardon my French, but I would raise hell if an independent hearing officer overrode the city council. The city council would have to agree with the hearing officer for them to undo something that the city council had ratified or had approved.
Well, I think that'll be the question, right? That's the debate. Is it... I mean, basically, there's two sides of that coin, right? A hearing officer generally, and with the Office of Administrative Law Judges, for example, provides hearing officers, and I think usually it's an attorney that is not your city attorney, right? Someone from outside the city without... So if they are looking at a complaint and saying, "I see a violation of law here, and this violation is so significant under the law that I think you should be removed," is it... Is it... So the question would be, and I honestly, it can go either way, and I think we can take this one out or we can... But is it... The fact that they are removed and not a member of the body, does that make it more credible in part? Because what they're saying is, "Okay, council, you have decided and adopted this Code of Ethics that tells us what matters to you, and we don't..." Based on when we apply this and the egregiousness of what happened, you know, removal is the appropriate remedy. Or do you want to retain the ability to say, "No, removal's not it," even though we know we violated or she violated the...
No, that would be the recommendation of the hearing officer to the mayor to remove, you know, someone from the Planning Commission or the Airport Commission or whatever the case may be. But if we decided that councilperson Johnson, you know, violated this, and I can say that about 10 because we're neighbors and friends, but if we decide that councilperson Johnson violated this Code of Ethics in a severe method, you know, that's up to the voters to recall him or for the rest of the council to get him to resign. That's not up to an independent hearing officer to make that decision.
I think that will be... I mean, that is absolutely an appropriate sanction in a way to exercise your sanction. And it is also appropriate to have them say, "This person cannot be sitting on this body anymore." You know, and we're talking about appointments, not elected or appointed council members, right? We're talking about appointments made to commissions and boards. So we could put, we could change it to something that our council can change it to something that says, "Subject to approval or confirmation by council." There's ways we can tweak it or remove it. But I think that's what you, you know, I would encourage all council members, because those are excellent points, to really think about, you know, what is the appropriate process and what do you want as a body to be removing?
I agree with Graham on this. If the council members are elected to represent the citizens, and if we move a determination to confirm an appointment that the mayor has suggested, I think the power should lie with the council to give the final approval. I think the hearing officer, who hasn't been chosen by the city to represent the city or by the citizens representing the city, should have the ability to make that recommendation that they find enough evidence to justify removal and that recommendation coming before the council.
Councilman Brown, but don't you think that if it was so grievous that a professional hearing officer has decided that, and we as a council decide to overrule him, that call in the caution hour ethics?
I would think-
I would hope the council would agree with the hearing officer, but I still think that that power should lie within the council.
Correct.
Well, we can make that change, or we can put it on the list of things that we walk you through, and you can make the change on the document. And I think one of the things we were trying to do too, and just something to keep in mind, is I have found that councils, when the Code of Ethics is in place and you're faced with sanctioning and penalizing individuals for conduct, it's not comfortable-
Right.
-and it's not easy, and it has led to true paralysis on several occasions-
Yes.
-because it's just so... Especially when you're dealing with appointees who are volunteers for the city and have... And you are, as elected officials, you are in a position where it doesn't feel comfortable to ask someone to give something to the city and then take it away from them and be the sort of hammer in that situation. That's what I've seen. However, you can absolutely... I do think that it is completely appropriate for the council to say, "Hey, you know what? We recognize this as our duty, and we're comfortable exercising it, and we don't want some hearing officer doing that without our involvement." And so I'm fine with either. I just want to make sure that you're thinking through how it plays out.
And just to clarify, I mean, when you talk about a conflict of interest, you're talking about, for example, Planning Commission or a council member that's been appointed, not elected to that said position. And I think that's where it's different. But I know too that anybody who is called on to be charged with an ethics violation, this is not taken lightly. And I know even in the legislature, when this happens, there's a thorough process, and I was on the Ethics Committee for the legislature, and let me tell you, it's a real difficult situation to be in, not only as the Ethics Committee, but also for the person that is then charged and brought forward to the committee, which in this case would be the hearing officer. So, you know, I understand what Councilmember Graham is saying, but I think too, you've got to find that balance. I mean, if you have a council member that's repeatedly doing things that are just egregious, right? Action does have to be taken because the general public requires that, you know. Planning Commission, well, that's a different body. That's a quasi-judicial body. So with the Planning Commission, the hearing officer does have that authority to make that recommendation for a planning commissioner to be removed or sanctioned or further discussion with administration. But I'm just saying, you don't want it so egregious, but you don't want it so lenient that there's a repeat, repeat, repeat of people continuing to do ethic violations without consequences, so.
I mean, it is. That's exactly the... I think councils expressed the issues that you have to ponder here, and I do think the difference, you know, we did not, and we even, we limited this just to commission and board members, so we didn't even include appointed council members because we see those individuals as elected by the council in essence, right, for serving that purpose. So we tried to create an even smaller spectrum. But again, I think that there's no wrong answer here. It's really, you know, what suits the city and really just, I am happy if you are thinking through each of those scenarios. So, you know, that makes me comfortable that we'll end up with a provision that works for Wassala.
If I may, City Clerk Newman here. So as sponsor of the ordinance, I'm assuming Councilmember Brown will bring forward the ordinance in a format he thinks, and then we'll work through the amendment process.
Exactly. And I think that's an important piece too, is I think one of the reasons why Councilmember Brown really wanted this in front of you is so that we could gather as much information as we can and then get it as close to, you know, and so we'll debrief and then we'll put another draft out there, and that'll come for introduction, and you'll have another chance to weigh in as well. And I know this is a lot, so I feel like, I mean, that was the other thing. We know it's a lot, and it's not a, you know, it's new, it's all new, so we might take a bit before we get there. The other provisions, I mean, I don't think there's anything else that's extremely nuanced or important in here, but please, you know, when you review the memo and the ordinance, Jamie, what's the best way to get comments or information or thoughts to the committee for... I mean, I think we-
I suggest it all, suggestions to the clerk's office and as a clearinghouse.
We just want to be careful. I mean, this is a little bit... This is a little sensitive because we want to obviously avoid an Open Meetings Act violation, but we want to be able to incorporate some of those things. So what we could do is, Jamie, at this stage, we could... I think we've heard a lot of comments, and council is very engaged, which is great because I feel like we have a lot of takeaways. So the committee may get together and draft the ordinance itself based on what we've heard, and then we can determine if there's a way. I really want to make sure that to the extent the city clerk's collecting thoughts, we haven't created what's called a serial communication or spoken wheel, but meeting app violation.
So I'm wondering, if I may, through the chair to the body, we can postpone this draft to the next regular meeting. We can meet again and committee the whole, give... Councilmembers will have time to have really digested it and really start talking more dialogue with the council, start talking specifics, like I want to see, you know, 204060B, hear some proposed language, kind of get the consensus, so we're doing it in public format, the feel of the body. Because I would really ideally like to see, obviously, when we bring it back for introduction, right? We have no debate on introduction. It's moved to public hearing. At the public hearing stage, you're going to have a document in front of you that's going to require four votes to remove anything because it's going to fail in a tie. You know, if you move something and you don't have the four votes. So it's really up to the body. This is kind of new for us. This was such a sweeping piece of legislation that I thought it was important to get it out in draft form for the council to really talk about and digest. And hopefully, when we do introduce it, we do have that public hearing. It's pretty much in the form that everybody can live with.
May I make a comment here?
Yeah.
I think coming back in two weeks is too soon, considering the fact that we're right on top of the Thanksgiving holiday. I, for one, would probably not have a lot of time to digest an entire document on introduction to come up with comments at that particular point. I would recommend that we wait and then come back at least the first week of December.
Madam Deputy Mayor, my recommendation would be that at the next meeting, we again schedule a committee of the whole just to have a discussion so we can go through things point by point, and people can bring up concerns, and then it kicks back to the committee, and the committee can decide whether they want to redraft any portion of it before bringing it forward for introduction and then approval.
And also just another, through the chair to the body, something to think about. We only have the one regular meeting in December, so I don't, when we bring, if the body decides to bring it back for discussion on the 22nd, maybe we pause again, maybe we bring it back again on the 13th, and we don't actually introduce it until that first meeting in December. So then we have the public hearing two meetings later, or excuse me, two weeks later, so there's not that big gap from December to January. There's something else for the body to think about.
I like that, and I think this is such a weighty matter, so thank you, Councilman Brown, for kind of pushing this forward. But I mean, the borough worked for years on their, you know, Code of Ethics. As I recall, the legislature spent a whole session, which is two years, you know, working on theirs, so there's certainly no rush in getting this done in two weeks, so.
They didn't have our attorney.
Any more discussion?
Madam Deputy Mayor, I move we exit committee of the whole.
Second? Okay. The motion was moved by Councilmember Graham and seconded by Councilmember Brown. Okay, is there an objection to the motion? Hearing none. The motion is approved. The time is 7:28.
Sorry, Madam Deputy Mayor, is there any motion to direct the clerk to bring this back then on the 22nd agenda under unfinished business in its current form or direction to the clerk?
That would be my recommendation. I don't know that we actually needed a motion.
Okay. I hear the council. It will come back. Thank you.
For discussion only?
Yes, sir.
Good. Okay.
Okay. Next on the agenda is communications. Madam Clerk, please read the title of the items under communications.
Thank you. First is IM number 2115. That's downtown parking lot leases. And secondly, we have the Airport Advisory Commission meeting minutes of October 21st, 2021.
Are there any questions from council?
Yes.
Yes. Tim?
Madam Mayor, on the downtown parking leases, the way that I'm reading it is that we have existing leases with two organizations that technically do not expire until, let's see, June 30th of 2023. So the way I'm reading it is we're now going back to these businesses, trying to terminate the lease. Is that the... Is that what this is all about?
see, June 30th of 2023. So the way I'm reading it is, we're now going back to these businesses, trying to terminate the lease. Is that the, is that what this is all about?
Through the mayor, this is Archie Giddings, Public Works Director, and that is correct. We're working on a long-range plan. We've just constructed another new parking lot that has no fees associated with it. So we think it's, maybe better term, suspend, but legally, yeah, terminate the lease until we can look at what are our long-range plans downtown? Is there another fee structure that works? But yeah, these two leases would go away, and that would be a parking lot for any of the businesses downtown.
How would that affect these businesses, though, who are really counting on those parking places for their clientele?
So they're not going to get penalized, so the only reason why they have the leases is to come into compliance with our parking code that we're looking at revising. So their lease goes away, they can still use it as is, and in fact, as the city's going to plow the parking lot. So they're getting a large benefit and continual use. And in fact, Crazy Moose is using the new parking lot more than they are the one they're paying a lease on right now.
I mean, because parking around the other establishment, Last Frontier, is a real issue. So, I mean, I just want to make sure that we're not creating an undue penalty on these businesses through canceling their leases.
Yeah, I really don't see that. They're going to, they're going to love not having to pay a fee, knowing they've got four parking lots, all in the vicinity, that all can be used versus just one.
So this is just information at this particular point? I mean, the leases have not been canceled, is that correct?
No, not yet, no. That's what we're planning on doing, as administration.
Okay. So you're going to bring this back, then, for the canceling of the leases, back to the council? Is that it?
That was, no, that was not, we can do that if there's, if the council so chooses.
Well, I guess I would really like to see some kind of feedback from the two businesses affected, that they are in fact happy with canceling a lease that they had already negotiated. I mean, it's sort of like kicking a renter out midterm and saying, "Up here on the street, sorry, we canceled your lease."
Yeah, if they have any objection, then we're not, then we would not do it.
Right, right. I mean, if you, if we can provide some method of saying, "Yeah, they had no objections and signed off," then that's their business.
Yeah, no, we're not going to force them in anything. They're in a signed contract right now, and it's unilateral. We can't force them to terminate. So this is, we're going to open it up with a letter to them. This is what we're proposing. I really see no objection at all that these businesses will have, but we would not unilaterally do it if they objected.
Madam Mayor, Councilman Brown, Archie, my understanding is, the businesses, other than paying $300, they won't see any difference. They'll still, their clients will still be using the parking lot, their business will continue, and nothing will change except they're not giving you any money next month.
Correct.
Madam Deputy Mayor.
Yes. Councilmember Graham?
Thank you, ma'am. So, number one, this kind of gets into the discussion that the city attorney was just talking about, about who has the authority to override the council. And in this case, the mayor doesn't have the authority to override the council or to cancel those leases, nor does the administration without the council's approval. So I would like to be informed of, you know, why we would want to cancel these leases, and then for the mayor and the administration, you know, which would be you, to move forward, and for us to hear from these businesses, and for us to look at the parking code and how that does. I know I use Crazy Moose, you know, a couple times a month. I always park in that dirt parking lot over there, even though we've got the new nice one, I just find it easier to get in and out of the old one. But then again, that's just me. But, you know, if somebody was parked over there with a semi truck and had taken up eight of those parking spaces, because, you know, that's just a convenient place for them to stop for a while, I mean, that, you know, could create a hardship for any of those businesses over there. So I'd kind of like to have that discussion amongst the council, whether we want to grant the mayor the authority to terminate those leases if she sees fit, as opposed to the mayor coming forward and said, "Well, I canceled these leases. Now I need your, now I apologize that I overstepped my boundary, but I need you to approve it because I've already done it." That just seems to me we're kind of going backwards here.
Well, actually, it's a contract, and they have the right to terminate upon notice without coming back to council.
Right.
And so that's what we're going to offer them, the option. Well, yeah, you're right. We can't, we can't cancel the lease, correct?
Correct. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Archie, have a question. Have we talked with these businesses at all? I mean, I think it's a good deal for them, I do, but have we had any discussions with them that this is what we're looking at doing?
Well, that's why we wanted to get to this meeting tonight, to vet out this issue, and then, yeah, we're going to open that dialogue.
And is the reason we're doing it, is it just kind of a hassle on our end to implement it, or why did we decide to go this direction?
So we got three different versions of parking lots going on right now. So we're trying to, we got one paid with a, with a fee box that doesn't generate much fee. We got two that are leasing the same spot, one in the day and one in the night. We have a brand new one we just opened, no one's paying anything for. So we've got a lot of, a variety of means of parking that we want to simplify until we can get a collective long-range plan.
Okay. That makes sense. Thank you. Any other questions?
One more question. Archie, wouldn't it perhaps make a little bit more sense to come up with a long-range plan and then implement it, as opposed to implement some changes and then come up with a long-range plan?
Well, we've got some short-range businesses that need parking that can't wait for a long-range plan. So we're, so we're trying to allocate parking spaces for everyone so they can at least open some new businesses, but it's going to take a while and public input to come up with a plan. And if we do nothing now, we're going to start affecting some new businesses that want to open.
So we're, so we're actually actively receiving concern from businesses and potential businesses that could use this parking lot, this unimproved parking lot at this point? Is that correct?
Well, any of the parking lots, yeah. Absolutely.
Well, currently, we talked about the three parking lots. Anybody can use the metered parking lot or the cash box parking lot. Anybody can use the paved parking lot over by the former museum and Crazy Moose without a fee. The only restrictions are the one dirt lot for these, which is affected by these two leases here, which is reserved in the evening for Last Frontier and during the day for Crazy Moose. Is that correct?
Oh, it's, it's a paved lot. Okay, it's not a gravel lot. And we have an equity issue here. We've got some people not paying for parking, some people paying $2 for parking, some people paying at least for parking. So we're trying to make this more equitable until we can come up with a long-range plan.
And have we ever written a parking ticket to anybody in the parking lot crossing the grapevine? Even though we've got the box there, I don't remember us ever collecting any penalty fees from that. Some people pay, some people don't.
Correct.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes. I was hoping I could just make a comment. I just want to make sure that we are all on the same page as far as approval. So when you have an agreement subject to council approval, that's designed to protect the fiscal purse, if you will, of the public at large before, and the property, right? So there are provisions in your code that require council approval of an agreement in certain situations. It doesn't necessarily mean that there is a council approval component to terminating an agreement, because if, now, the contract terms and the terms of law that govern an agreement will certainly come into play, but it's, but that approval isn't part of that process. So I, I just see no problem with bringing information. I just wanted to make sure there, that those two distinctions are clear. Council approves, council gives authority to enter into or execute an agreement, and all of the decision-making goes into that piece. The council doesn't necessarily weigh in on the termination of an agreement, at least not under your code provisions, if that makes sense. And that's in part because the agreement itself is what governs the termination of an agreement.
However, the history of Wasilla City Council has been, the administration brings forward some very specific stuff to be approved by the council, and so perhaps in the future, the administration can be a little bit more vague, so we're not stepping on any toes here as we go through. I mean, if the administration goes forward and says, "Hey, we're going to pay $300 a month for three years, you know, this is the amount of money that's going to be, this is the agreement that's attached to it, and that's what the council approves," then it, you know, it kind of gets into that gray area when you go outside of what, what was specifically written. And gray and government are not two good things, in my opinion. But thank you for your opinion, Holly.
And certainly, I am not suggesting that council can't comment on administrative policy or what's, what's coming before them. I just, I just did not want there to be a record created that suggested that there was an obligation for council approval to be involved in a termination, because as your attorney, my thought is, if you're holding an administration accountable for that, that's one thing, but if somebody of agreement, a party to an agreement, is then holding council and the city responsible for this layer of approval, that doesn't, that isn't in your code, that could create liability for the city. And that's, so that's why I put it, put it out there.
Thank you.
Not to limit council's governance.
Any other discussion? Okay. Let's go on to audience comments. Is anyone present who would like to address the city council at this time? Okay, let's see, none.
None, Madam Chair.
Oh, yes.
Just for the gentleman who spoke, just so he knows that if he didn't have time to finish, he could come back in additional time.
Oh, yeah. You can have three more minutes. Are you okay? Okay. Okay, so next on the agenda is mayor, clerk, attorney, and council comments. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. So tomorrow, we have orientation here in council chambers for newly elected, or re-elected. They're newly elected this time around, council members Sullivan Leonard and Graham, so we look forward to that. Thank you for clearing your schedules to be able to join us. Also for council members Graham and Sullivan Leonard. We did forward you the link, if you're interested, on Thursday to take the second part of the NEO training. It came free with your AML registration. Wednesday night, we have a special city council meeting here at 6 o'clock, where we'll talk about CARES Act dispersment of our remaining funds. Packet for that was released last Friday. And then we have regular meeting here on November 22nd. Benji and I, Sarah, will be on personal leave. Benji and I are attending the Municipal Clerks Conference next week with you in Anchorage. November 18th and 19th, we'll be attending the clerk portion. And then following that, November 22nd, I have my surgery. I've reported that all to you, so I will be on personal leave. Sarah will be acting clerk in my absence. So if you have any questions, concerns, please let me know, and we will see two of you here tomorrow and the rest of the body here on Wednesday, the entire body here for our special meeting. So thank you.
Madam Clerk, can you update me on who is attending AML?
Everybody except council members Johnson and Harvey.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Madam Attorney, any other question or discussion? We, I was going to say, was anything left? Is that? Councilmember Graham?
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. Very interesting presentation today. Thank you, Madam Attorney, and once again, thank you, Simon, for kind of pushing this horse forward. It's certainly not an easy conversation, and it obviously takes a lot of work to make anything move, and we certainly appreciate all that and look forward to seeing how that turns out. I do have a question for Mr. Giddings. As you're aware, I live near Carter Park and on my daily walk, much like you, sir, you know, I see things, and one of the things I see is there's a skylight, you know, one of those fiberglass skylight things that has been busted all summer long. Is that still functional? Are we going to do something to keep the snow from penetrating into that building? Or, anyway, if you could just look into that and, and, you know, let me know. Maybe I'm just looking at something that's been dead for years and I just didn't realize it. That wouldn't, that wouldn't surprise me. And for the chief, thank you for your report today. I would like to get, you know, probably at least monthly reports on how we're doing on staffing. You know, we can certainly help recruit and be good ambassadors for our city and for our Wasilla Police Department, which is good. I know we have AML coming up in a couple weeks. We'll be able to chat with a lot of people from a lot of different jurisdictions, and as you're unfortunately well aware, you know, police officers move in and move out, and they spend three or four years, and they, and they move on. So we're, we can certainly help with that, you know, if we're aware of what your needs are, what your concerns are, we'd certainly be glad to help you on that. So, so that's, so that's great. And for Scott, you know, there was a big event this weekend at the Menard Center, you know, the holiday, something Holiday Show, I think is what they called it. You know, I didn't, I didn't hear about it until I was driving by and I saw a sign there that they were taking down, you know, said the Holiday Show was going on. That's probably my own fault because I don't watch TV, and the radio stations I listen to just didn't, didn't have that on there. But it's great to see people back using the Menard again in big numbers, which is what we need. You know, we provide outstanding asset to the community, which you manage for us, and so congratulations on making that work, and hopefully we'll continue to work with that promoter and other promoters to attract more of those shows and let them know, you know, Wasilla is the place to be, even though it wasn't 100% of what it was a couple years ago. My understanding from talking to several of the vendors there is it was pretty daring close. So, so congratulations on that.
Thank you, Councilmember Graham. Yes, KO Productions has been a regular client of ours that have put that show on, and they were very excited this year to be able to have all their vendors compared to previous years because of some of the COVID restrictions. I think they had about 120 different businesses there selling. And from the door counts that I've got, traffic was excellent. Yes.
So thanks for, you know, facilitating, helping facilitate that and get it together, and all the work that you and your staff did to make that work. I really appreciate it. Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, I had to leave for the last meeting, but I, I thank you, deserve a thank you to the city council and to the directors for city of Wasilla being debt-free, and especially thanks to the finance committee for kind of leading that train. So I think we should all be appreciative of the financial department for us getting there, and the good job that they had to do and we all had to do to get there and stuff. And that's an unusual accomplishment for most communities. So Wasilla is ahead in that area. So I just want to thank you for that.
Okay. Councilmember Sullivan Leonard?
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. Glad to see you at the helm, and you've run a really nice meeting today, so thank you for that. I just want to say I appreciate Councilmember Brown bringing forward the new ethics ordinance and--
(inaudible).
This was brought forward many years ago when I was on council, and unfortunately, we didn't come to a decision that allowed a strong ethics ordinance to come forward, and that was really unfortunate. So here we are, what, 12 years later, and we're still at the table working it out. So anyway, I think it's a new group working on it. I appreciate our attorney's input on this and the administration, and so hopefully we come to a good, strong consensus on this and can get it moving forward. Other than that, I look forward to AML and connecting with other elected officials across the state. So anyway, thank you and have a good night.
Thank you, Colleen. Councilmember Johnson?
Thank you, Madam Attorney, and Councilmember Brown. It was a very good presentation. I want to thank you for all the hard work that you have. Other than that, I don't have any comments.
Thank you. Councilmember Harvey?
No comments, this evening, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, my turn. I do want to remind everyone of the Veterans Day event, Thursday, November 11th, at 11:00 a.m. at the Veterans Wall in Wasilla. So please come, and if there is no other business at hand, we'll adjourn the meeting. Unless objection is raised, any objection raised? No. Okay, hearing none? The meeting is adjourned at 7:50 p.m.